Are you ready?
She's got it.
Test one, two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Um, I, uh, this time I'm calling to order the meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee on Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh one P M. And I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, our, I'm happy to say that our first item of business is some fall athletic recognitions. Um, and we do have one member who is virtual this evening, and so I don't know if she's gonna be able to see, and I don't know if there's any way that H W Cam can ensure that the athletes are on camera when they are being recognized. That would be great.
Okay.
That looks good. I can hear too.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent. Okay, Mr. Genualdo.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for having us. Uh, we're honored to be here tonight. I'm honored to share, um, our fall successes with our coaches and our athletes and some parents that are here to celebrate them as well. We're always grateful that you allow us to do this, so thank you. Some members are at practice at the moment. There's a couple of folks that are sick. What we'll do is we'll recognize each team separately, so if I say, for example, cross-country, maybe all the cross-country folks stand up that are here, we'll read off all the names and your accomplishments, and then we'll go on to the next team. Is that cool with everybody? All right, okay, great. So, before we start, there is one thing that I always say that resonates, and it's part of the reason why these teams are great in the first place, and it's what I would like to think is the cornerstone of our athletic program. We're gonna read the names and accomplishments of some individuals tonight that are over the moon, and they absolutely deserve to be recognized, and we're so honored to be able to work with them day in and day out. But they know as well as anyone their success is because of their teammates. So, you know, we're recognizing captains and M V Ps and things of that nature, but it really takes everybody. So, we wanna recognize those people that aren't here as well as part of the success that's, like, you know, that's with us, and, um, we're mindful of that as well. So, uh, I don't think there's anyone here from the football team, but we do wanna congratulate them for the second year in a row. They won the Cal Sportsmanship Award. I actually sit in that meeting and help facilitate it for the league, and, um, sometimes it's just a rubber stamp and people write names in and whatever. But there was actually discussion about it this year, and what was actually said was the way that, um, our kids played hard the whole year. We had some ups and downs, um, some ups at the end of the year. And one of the coaches from Amesbury, who's a friend of mine, and they went to the Super Bowl, remarked that it was evident that we're gonna be very good soon, and it was evident how hard we played right until the end. So, that's why we got that, and those captains were Chris Collins, Al Akody, Cooper Suman, and Henry Stinson. They're not here tonight, but I wanna recognize them, 'cause we don't take sportsmanship awards lightly, and we're grateful for that. The next team in, uh, had an individual win the Player of the Year, and that was our golf team. Uh, our golf team had a great year. They came in second place. They went to the sectionals, placed very well. But Cooper Miller, uh, Junior, was the Player of the Year, um, in golf, and he had a phenomenal year, and wanna make sure we mention him. Uh, I do know that there's members of the cross-country program, so if everybody from the cross-country team could kindly stand up so we could recognize you. Our cross-country teams have a history of incredible success. The boys, uh, the last few years have won the league title. No, is that right? The last couple of years, the boys won the league title? Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the girls, before last year, had won, I don't know, a hundred and seventy-two league titles in a row. I don't even know what the amount is, uh, but it was a lot, maybe seventeen or eighteen. And then last year, they didn't, simply because they didn't have enough athletes. Well, this year, both teams, probably since I've been here in twelve years, the best collective, uh, success that both teams have had at once. I wanna recognize the captains real quick. For the boys' cross-country team, it's Clark, Clark Glidden, James Regan, and Ben Rich. The girls' captains were Myra Fleming, Sophia Happel, and Charlotte Madden. We also had some incredible individual awards for those teams. Uh, the boys' Runner of the Year was James Regan. The girls' Runner of the Year was Charlotte Madden. Grace Rich, Grace Rich, won the individual Division III Championship. Uh, she blew everybody away. It was incredible. No surprise, Coach Sawyer won his, what, ninety-second and ninety-third Cal Coach of the Year Award, probably more, something like that. Uh, but he actually won for both teams, which is kinda mind-bending. Both teams won the league, like I said, but also both teams were Division III C champions. That's kinda like a state championship in most sports. There's another level in track after that. Absolutely incredible year, almost, there's a lot of athletes coming back. So, um, if the other teams start now, they might beat them when they start next year. So, congratulations to all, and, uh, do thank you to the cross-country folks. So, congratulations to you. All right, so you guys are good. If I could have the boys' soccer members stand up, please? Boys' soccer team won the league title for, I believe, the third year in a row, um, if I'm not mistaken on that. They made it to the Elite Eight round of the state tournament, which is the third round, and lost in overtime that I wanna mention. I don't want to come over here and throw things at me. Lost a gut-wrenching game in overtime, uh, o- over at Gordon. Incredible game, lost to a really good team. But the captains for boys' soccer were Finn, Finn Tretneyak, Malcolm Crawford, and Keenan Maguire. Andre Graberio was the Cape Ann League Player of the Year, and Coach Matt Orin was, I think, for the second year in a row, the Cape Ann League Coach of the Year. An incredible year, and, uh, we're gonna miss you guys terribly. Like, one of my favorite things in the postseason was I'd see Finn in the parking lot at Gordon College and give each other a quick hug and say good luck. I'm gonna miss that, man. So, like, so, we wish you all very good luck. The girls' soccer team, uh, so you guys are good. The girls' soccer team is represented, mm, go ahead. It's just you, I know. Uh, I, I, I don't know how many shutouts you had this year, but we, I, so I don't have that stat. Uh, but the captains for the girls' soccer team were Stuart Bernard, who's here, Leah Coffey, and Lily Mark. The girls' soccer team won their fourth league title, so, for example, Stuart, as a senior, won a league title all four of her years. Her first year, I remember, was that crazy year when we were hybrid, and, you know, we didn't have throw-ins, and, you know, I was going around spraying the balls on the sideline in case anyone touched them. We've come a long way from that, but, um, like, again, uh, fourth Cape Ann League title, Elite Eight tournament. Coach Nancy Adele won Coach of the Year again. She's not feeling well, so we hope she feels better, and Senior Lily Mark won the Player of the Year. Stuart, thank you for being here. Uh, there's more to be heard from you in the ski season, I know, as well as girls across, so hopefully this isn't the last time you're here, but, uh, thank you for being here tonight. The other, I think that's it, uh, for what we have. I'm trying to erase. I know you're busy. I, I, I don't want it to seem like I'm glazing over this. The amount of time that, you know, someone, I'm just gonna embarrass Finn, 'cause he probably knows I'm going to and is covering his face. You know, like, if you're a senior athlete, you've been doing this a long time. Your parents have been driving you since, you know, you couldn't carry your own bag, and you're getting out of the car in early mornings and all that stuff. It's an incredible journey, and I know we're doing this in ten minutes, and it probably feels like not enough, but there's not really enough we could do for you. So, very, very proud to know you, very honored to be able to work with you. And, uh, for you seniors, we wish you good luck in your seasons and the rest of your senior year and everything else you do going forward. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you.
And thank you for having us.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you, all the athletes, um, for coming and spending a little time. We know it's challenging to come, and it is so meaningful for us, the work that we do. A lot of times, we don't really get as much time as we would like to see the students and the achievements that you all, um, accomplish, and it's really wonderful, um, to get this opportunity to see you in person and have you here. Does anybody else have anything they wanna add?
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and I just wanna say I did take some notes. I mean, I just, it warms my heart, like, how amazing, like, all the athletic accomplishments are amazing, but I know that we, you know, uh, we, that so much of it is about the culture and the sportsmanship, and that we have all the, these coaches of the year, and just year after year, it's, it's just, um, so wonderful to hear about the kind of people that you all are in addition to your athletic achievements. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, one more round of applause. Thank you. Okay, Amy, can you hear us still? You doing okay? Yep, okay. Okay, um, truly, I know, um...
Am I doing it?
No, not yet. No, I was just gonna say, um, truly, one of my favorite parts is anytime we get to have students here. Really fun. Um, okay, so, on our agenda, um, unfortunately, you'll see, we are, um, the item number, our next item is struck through. Um, we had, um, just a challenge with the, um, Hamilton Select Board posting, uh, didn't get posted in time, and so, um, we are gonna have to postpone, um, our interviews to appoint a new, uh, member. I was hoping that we, since we do have this on the agenda, we might use this time to talk about scheduling. I did, um, our next meeting is the twenty-first.
I can't be there.
Okay, so, the twenty-first is a challenging time of year, but we do have a meeting, and we do need to have a meeting that day. Um, I have put it out to the Select Board and have gotten some feedback, but don't know if all of them can make it.
First works for me. No more Wednesdays, please.
Yeah, no, that's a regular Thursday. So, I heard one yes and one no.
Yes, I'm in.
What was that, David? Yep, all right, Amy and David are yes. So, I mean, that is our regularly scheduled meeting, so, um, I'm open if people have other thoughts, but that was sort of my thought on what we would present to the Select Board.
Be nice to fill the slot before the new year.
I agree. I'd hoped it would be at this meeting, because...
Yeah, no, yeah, but, yes.
Yeah.
No, it was, um, I, I will say both candidates were extremely gracious and thoughtful in their responses to having to be delayed. I know that that's frustrating for them, but I, I think it's gonna be, yeah, we can get it done. All right, so, without objection, unless people, I, that will shoot for the twenty-first, if that's... Looks like people are, okay. And these will be the two candidates, because we, the time period is closed now, so it'll just be these two candidates. Okay, um, all right, next up on the agenda, we have, um, citizens' comments. Just, do you have the zoom up for citizens' comments?
Yeah, no one's in.
You have no one there? It doesn't appear to me that there are any citizens' comments in the room, correct? Okay, in which case, I am not gonna read my spiel about citizens' comments. And we will go ahead and close citizens' comments at seven fourteen. I don't think I said it yet, 'cause nobody kicked me, but this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. Okay, um, I can't remember who I gave it to. Is it you?
Yep.
Okay, Jen's gonna read a portion of our protocols.
As elected members of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, we, including the superintendent, accept the high honor and trust that has been placed in us to ensure that the students of the district receive the best education possible. To that end, we hereby commit to the following in the conduct of our business. Two, the superintendent and the school committee represent the needs and interests of all students in the district and place the students' interests above all others in their decisions while remaining within the limitations of a voter-approved budget.
Thank you. David, would you be willing to re- read a portion of the mission statement?
Sure. Uh, the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee, excuse me, will lead and inspire a district that inspires all students to realize their fullest potential and feel a power, uh, powerful sense of individual and collective belonging.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any items they'd like to hold from the consent agenda? I do. I, um, I'm gonna hold the minutes from November sixteenth. And Julia, when we're ready, when you're ready.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee accept the consent agenda withholding the minutes from November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second by Jen Carr. We need to vote in a roll-call vote, because we have a virtual member. So, I'll start with you, Amy.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dana's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that is unanimous of the five members present, and the motion passes. So, I hold the minutes, um, just for a point of clarity, on page four of the minutes, um, under the Chair's report, I didn't really, I swear I didn't do this to be difficult, but it, I wanna just be, make sure it's accurate. So, and I did re-watch it to make sure that it, I actually did say it accurately. So, the second sentence says, um, "She reviewed the process used to replace a school committee member and noted that the term will be for two years." And that's not really accurate, and the, um, I did re-watch. It's kind of a back and forth, and Jen actually asks a question, but it does get clarified, so if you're willing, I do have a motion to edit that. So, um, and then we can discuss if people want to. So, I move that the second sentence of the minutes on page four, under Chair's report, that the second sentence should read, "She reviewed the process used to replace a school committee member and noted that a new member will be appointed until the election in April. Then, the election will be open to all to run for the remaining two years of the term." Second by David Polito. Is there discussion?
Can we just change she to Dana for clarity's sake, 'cause we have Dana and Francesca in the first sentence?
Sure. Absolutely.
If we're modifying it anyways.
That's a friendly amendment. Yep, I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
I didn't spell Francesca's name right.
Oh, thank you.
Tiny friendly, tiny friendly amendment.
That is in the previous sentence. I think that we can just, that's a, correct. That's in the previous sentence. There's a typo. That's correct. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion that's on the table? Okay, um, all right, we'll go the other direction. Do you, um, do you feel like you have it?
I would need your, I'll need your language.
You're gonna need my scribbles.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay, um, Jen?
Yes.
Yes.
Dana's yes. David?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes, and I will, um, provide you with that.
Sure.
I don't think you're gonna, well, not sure that you're gonna be able to read my scratches, but...
I'll just take a picture of it before we go.
Okay. All right, uh, new business, um, this, oh, you have it up there. Excellent, thank you. This is just, um, the warrant for the annual, um, for the election of school committee, and, um, this, we do this every year. I'm very happy to say this is, we're doing it at a meeting, which we didn't have to call an extra meeting to do this. So, we got it done. I don't know if anyone has any questions about what this is. But it's just, uh... It's a legal notice that we're gonna have elections, basically.
Looks good.
All right, can I have a motion?
I have one question. I don't know if it's difficult for me to ask this today, but is the part about putting it in the newspaper in here? Uh, yeah, do we still need to have that? Is that part of the regional agreement?
Correct.
Where does that come from? Okay.
It is.
Just curious. Let's leave it for now.
Would the, the motion be to accept the warrant?
I think we're approving it, yeah.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve the warrant for election of school committee members.
Second.
Okay, and, um, is there any further discussion? Um, I guess I just wanted to highlight, as we just discussed when we were talking about the minutes, you'll notice it does indicate here that, um, there is gonna be two term, two, two spots for three-year terms and one spot for a two-year term, um, which is different than typical. All right, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dana's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and that is unanimous of the members present, and the motion passes. All right, next up is the twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar. And that's to you, Eric.
Thank you very much. Um, as you may know, in our agreement with the H W R A, um, uh, E A, excuse me, H W E A, the, uh, school district calendars have to be approved for two years. So, we, we're just finishing up this one. We usually do it in December, right around the same time. So, we have already approved next school year's calendar. This is for the year after. Fairly similar across the board, in, except for this one minor tweak that we made, and that happens in December, because the half-day we would have taken in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, before the December break, would have happened on December twenty-fourth. So, I added that as a, a holiday off, a, a still part of that vacation, and moved the half-day to the twenty-third, which is our usual day. Having the half-day on the twenty-fourth would be a logistical nightmare trying to just take attendance. So, in talking with the union, we have agreed that that makes sense for everybody. It just pushes the end of the school year out by one day, from the eleventh to the twelfth now, um, on the regular one-hundred-and-eighty-day calendar. So, not a, not a big impact, but just wanted to note that so that people knew that we made that adjustment.
I was actually looking at this calendar earlier. This is like the dream school year.
Yeah, yeah.
This is like the perfect year.
Perfect in, perfect out.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, yeah, let's start with a motion. Go ahead.
I move that the Hamilton Wenham Regional School Committee approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school calendar.
Second.
Okay, um, so, does anyone have any questions or concerns? Eric, you already answered my question, which is just to make sure that the, uh, union has looked at this.
Yep.
Which is part of our agreement, with that the union looks at it. Anybody else have any questions, thoughts? Okay.
All good.
Looks like we're ready for a vote. All right, Jen?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Dana's yes. David?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay, and the motion passes unanimously of the five members who are present. Excellent. The next item is Roberts Rules. This...
Uh, so I just wanna move, uh, to table this discussion, uh, to a later date.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I actually couldn't hear David.
Oh, David's motion was to table the Roberts Rules, um, discussion to a later date, and it was seconded by Jen.
Jen seconded it.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, uh, Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dana's yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um... So, um, next up is the update on the Wenham Master Planning.
Now, I'm gonna move to table the Mas- Wenham Master Plan discussion.
Second.
They moved to table that one, too.
Okay, um, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, uh, David?
Yes.
Uh, Dana's a yes. Julia?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay, and that is unanimous, and the motion passes to table. Okay, moving right on.
Wow, we're an hour early.
Yeah, a lot of things, a lot of things didn't happen tonight. Exactly, this was not what I envisioned originally. All right, Kevin, welcome.
Hi, good evening. Nice to see everyone. Uh, so, yesterday, the district held a bond anticipation note sale totaling twelve million, one hundred thousand dollars, and there was a total of four bids, and Jeffrey's LLC was the winning bidder with a net interest cost of three-point-three-nine percent. The projects that were authorized for this borrowing included the athletic field project, the feasibility study, the fiscal year twenty-one capital plan, and the fire suppression system project. Prior to the sale, uh, Vinny and I spoke with, uh, Standard and Poor's to get a rating, and, uh, Vinny did a fantastic job, uh, really, uh, did, did a wonderful job, uh, really highlighting Hamilton Wenham, uh, to the rating agents, and, uh, they, they gave us their highest rating of S P one-plus for this note, and also confirmed our triple-A rating on our existing bonds. So, our district bond council has prepared the following motion to approve this borrowing. So, let me read it here. "To move to approve the sale of the twelve million, one hundred thousand dollar, four-point-two-five percent general obligation bond anticipation notes, the notes of the district dated December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and payable December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, to Jeffrey's LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of one-hundred-one thousand thirty-five dollars. Further move that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and a final official statement dated December fifth, twenty twenty-three, each in such form as approved by the district treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further move that we authorize and direct the district treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the district treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review the up, and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the notes. Further move that any certificates or documents related to the notes, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one end of the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a P D F file or by other electronic transmission shall, shall be as effective as delivery of a manually-executed counterpart signature page to such document, and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. Further move that each member of the committee, the district secretary, and the district treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes."
Do I have to read that motion again?
So...
Can we say so moved?
Yes, that's, that's the point of that.
So moved. All right.
Second.
I'd be happy to, just...
All right, and that's, uh, motion by Julia and seconded by Jen Carr. Thank you for reading that.
My pleasure. I've done it enough.
Is there discussion or questions? Amy?
No.
Nope. All right, looks like we're ready to vote? Yes, you have a question?
No. No.
All right, um, Jen?
Yes.
Julia?
Yes.
Dana's yes? David?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
All right, and the motion passes, um, unanimously of the five members who are present. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
It was easy enough, it was about seven spots.
Oh, excellent.
We're gonna pause for station identification.
I'm gonna pause for one moment while I sign things. Okay.
Dana's gonna sign documents.
Thank you for narrating.
Of course.
Oh, just.
Oh.
I think I could only hear what the laptop was pointing toward.
Sorry.
So like I could hear the athletic recognition, I can hear Jen and Julia and Dana and you, but I can't hear David because it's like probably.
Cause he's like, yeah, he's on the other side, right? Okay.
And you have to sit sideways, that's not fair.
My best view.
Your right side.
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be your left side, that's right. Darn it, it's the other way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thank you all for being patient while we signed. All right, next up is the vote to approve the audit firm for fiscal years twenty-four to twenty-six.
Yep.
Vinnie?
So about every three or four years, we make a recommendation and seek your approval from the school committee for an audit firm. This year, I'm recommending we continue with Powers and Sullivan, our current audit firm, for the next three fiscal years. Powers and Sullivan, in my mind, has really gone above and beyond what their contract calls for. They're really always available to answer any questions and kind of review any financial procedures that I have before I issue them. So it's without hesitation that I seek your approval to award them the contract for the next three years, which will cover this fiscal year, FY twenty-five, as well as FY twenty-six. If you approve, I also ask that you allow me to kind of enter into negotiations to work out a contract price.
So moved?
No, I have two motions, but do I read them both or just the first one?
You didn't get a second, so.
That's fine.
Okay.
She wants to do them one at a time, right?
Okay, I move to approve Powers and Sullivan as Hamilton Wenham, as the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District's audit firm for fiscal years twenty-two-four through twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Do I need to read both of them at once?
No, I think we need to vote separately on them. So, all right, so we had a second by Jen Carr, I just have a quick. So it, it doesn't matter, I guess it just. We're already in FY twenty-four.
It's after the fact, so they won't come in until FY twenty-five and they audit twenty-four.
Ah, okay, so it's for, to audit those years, but not to work during those years.
Correct, to audit fiscal year.
Understood, I'm glad I asked, that makes more sense, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, excellent. All right, anybody else have any questions or discussion? Nope, okay, all right, well, it looks like we're ready to vote. Amy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dana's yes, Julia?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Okay, and that is unanimous of the members present and the motion passes. Thank you, Vinnie. We have another one.
One more.
Yep.
I'm, I can't spell unanimous, okay. I'm. I move to allow Vincent Leone, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Administration, to enter into negotiations with Powers and Sullivan for FY twenty-two-four through FY twenty-twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen Carr. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All right, let's start with you, Julia.
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Amy? David?
Yes.
Dana's yes, right, and that is, the motion passes unanimously of the members present.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along to committee reports. Capital Finance?
We meet on December twentieth.
Okay, all right, that's, which is the, right, the day before our meeting?
It's the day before our meeting on the twenty-first.
Okay. Great. Policy?
We had a meeting scheduled Monday, but we didn't meet, it was scheduled via Zoom, but David and I will schedule another meeting, David, Eric and I.
Okay. Negotiations, David?
We actually just set our first date to begin, excuse me, bargaining with the.
Office personnel.
Office personnel, union thing.
Yeah, and I think that's the fourteenth, correct. Yep, that's our first date. And also, I will say on negotiations, we did, I signed and the union president signed the ESP contract, so that is signed and complete. All right, next to you, Eric, for superintendent's report.
Okay, I just wanted to take a moment to let people know, excuse me, let people know where we are in the process of the development of the Hamilton Wenham Elementary School Project. We have had a number of meetings, we've hit a couple of milestones and are currently waiting on some preliminary pricing on fifteen different versions of the four options that were approved by the MSBA. So each of those options has sub-options that include a renovation or a renovation addition or a new school or, you know, bringing up the code. So each of those opportunities have given us fifteen different options between the two parcels of land of the Winthrop School and the Cutler School sites. So currently, the architects have requested outside evaluations and pricing. And these are really preliminary pricing, they will not be the exact price because they're just doing it based on square footage. And we should get those by the end of this week and then we'll bring those back to the committee on, I believe it's the eighteenth. There is a school building committee meeting to discuss those options. On that same night, we'll be shifting into presenting to the Hamilton Select Board to give them an overview of the project, some of the pricing quotes that we have and then starting the conversation about extending the leases on the properties. As people may or may not know, we have the Cutler and the Winthrop School Sites and school buildings are leased from the town of Hamilton. Both of those leases expire in twenty twenty-five. In order for us to move forward with the project, we have to have a commitment for at least one of those sites from the towns, what they call controlling interests. So we'd have to have a lease extension for fifty years on at least one of those sites to be able to move forward with the support of the MSBA. So those are the processes that are, that are going on now. I also just kind of posted on screen there, did you hear about the elementary school project? And we're doing some public dates in January, on the tenth at six-thirty in the Miles River Multipurpose Room. And then on the seventeenth at nine AM, so we have a day and a night opportunity for people to come and learn about the project, see what's going on, ask questions, gain some insight and information. And then I always tell people to go to the website, the website has been recently updated again. It has a ton of information about the process, about the test fits now. They've been test-fitting some of these designs to the two sites. So they're looking at, you know, a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-student renovation of Cutler School. This is, you know, what it could look like in a box format. So very low-level preliminary opportunities to get an idea for location, styling, and then we'll get into, once we get through the pricing process, we will pare down to a couple of options. The school building committee will pare it down in anticipation of getting a final vote for what they call a preferred option on April. If I forget the date, it's, I think it's the third week in April when we meet, we would vote for a preferred option and that would be at least one or two options moving forward that would be more deeply investigated, more deeply designed, and then the pricing would be, be much more specific. So right now, we're just getting a kind of a bigger overview based on some boxes and some square footage numbers. So they're just gonna be able to say, you know, a two-hundred-and-eighty-five square, two-hundred-and-eighty-five-student building is allowed to be X numbers of square feet. This is what we're seeing for construction costs by the square foot across the industry in Massachusetts. And then they really just do that, that type of a pricing schematic, so. We are in that process now and we'll continue to move forward with the, the process with the building committee and update the committee here, but certainly we want to invite any members of the Hamilton and Wenham communities to come to one of these forums, come to both if you want, but at least come to one and learn about the project. We will have them videotaped so that we'll be able to post them. And then working on some other opportunities for community connections along the continuum. We're not gonna stop in January, we'll do more as we, we continue forward, so. We were at the, the winter, the Holiday Boutique. We spent, I think, five hours there on Saturday and had a great time meeting people, talking to people, getting some insight, hearing people's thoughts and fears and excitement about the project and that helps our architects, who was, it was me and one of the architects and our, one of our project managers, we take all that information back and we sit with our group. We met a meeting today and we go through all that information that we collect and what we hear and add it into our FAQs, if it's certain questions, we, we develop answers and post them on the FAQ document that's on the website. And then we just really continue to build out the information as, as we get it. And we also met yesterday with the Winthrop School Council. We did a presentation for them with our OPM and went through the introductory slides and kind of here we, here's where we are, where we.